We'll start with the city council meeting for December of thirteen, twenty twenty-two. This will be special. We have five cities than normal. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and Falcon Stanley move to hit here. All the way in the road, we'll start with council members. Kim Helverson is, uh, made on the same. Then let's go. Hi, everyone. And I'm Chris Harris. So that's the one that crosses. We also have city assistance, announcement, and others. Captain from finance. Other words. Uh, when I'm concerned, post department, Linda Bean is stepping down. And, uh, by no, it's a by no mayor is here. Um, and we also have visitors also. Many citizens comments that are brought up. Other than so we will go on to adopt the agenda. Anything that needs to be changed or added? Adopt the agenda will be no changes made to it. With a motion that's been made in second, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes pass. We can do the consent agenda. We will have minutes and appointments. And also we'll do finance at the same time.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made in second. To consent agenda, approval of minutes and appointments and financial all at one motion. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes pass. Okay, presentations, public hearings, recognition, proclamation. Is there anything on that one? Go on now. And start with engineering then, Derek.
Yeah, um, two pins here, uh, tonight. Um, first, uh, just a brief update on, uh, Pearl Creek Cemetery sewer projects, uh, project. Um, our, uh, survey work, uh, is near, uh, is not complete. I've got guys that are coming back in from September of this kind of summer here. So, uh, we're going on, uh, the actual layout of the project. Once we have a good understanding of that and what's about, uh, probably along with that will eventually. Or, um, basically we need to determine to what extent do we need to implement some what would be impacts to, uh, to those properties, uh, before we can. That so, um, that's where, uh, uh, where were that project question. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's most of the sewer from extent runs through this. That's where it's currently, uh, laid out here, but we need to determine, you know, exact extents and what those impacts will look like. Um, and then we're planning on reaching out and talking, uh, more details, but, you know, it wouldn't through your guys' heart. That's, uh, that's the biggest question in terms of impacts. Uh, that's what I need to determine here. We got our survey work, but we just need to lay out kind of our grading model so we can show, okay, what would this actually look like? Will it actually work for the city or do you got to, uh, come up with a plan? Um, that's, that's where we're at with it. Far front end, we need to have more discussion with everyone, including guys before we proceed forward.
My other question was, um, how can we talk a little bit about kind of like with the amp on the bottom?
Yeah.
I don't know if you're, oh, go there, I don't think. Sensible.
Yeah.
Now, that's a profit part.
Yep.
For getting off the hill.
Yep.
In high patch, that I could set ample of property.
I think it's actually on your guys' but, uh.
It's still proud of the art that.
Yeah. That, that's why we need to figure out what the exact extents are because it's in our best interest to limit the amount of impacts. Keep, keep the project as tight as possible and avoid, uh, avoid the need to have to get some more property owners. So it's my kind of general goal to stay away from that, uh, you know, from that marker and that property. Um, yes, I, I'm aware of that one. Yeah, the red, the red, yep, yep. We definitely need to talk more details with you guys. I just, I don't have quite enough information. I know you're gonna have more, more questions, so. Yeah.
So how, how did you come up with placement of the station site there?
Uh, we just ran some very rough grading with the pipelines and knowing where, uh, uh, knowing where the river bed is. Or creek bed, that's, that's where, that's where it really drove a lot of this or why we're looking at this layout versus needing having those line. Um, uh, that kind of drove it, just kind of taking a high level look. And that's why we need that, uh, survey work really early on. I think it was like February of last year or twenty twenty-two that we started that. We need that information just so we can put together this overall layout and why it's, you know, why the plan that we have today is the way it is. Um, the goal is to design the project over this winter here and get it out next spring realistically with, uh, um, delays getting parts, materials, um, probably more realistic effective in point four. We have a similar project over in Grand Meadow that's dealing with that right now. Be a little ways out. Any other questions really for that project? Um, so next, uh, next thing on the list here, uh, uh, previous meetings, we talked about, uh, the twenty twenty-three street improvement projects. So we had that, uh, map of, of, uh, various streets throughout town and, uh, an asphalt overlay or patching or similar types of pavement improvements. Um, uh, council had selected the overall scope, basically, the specs that we're going after with that project in order to proceed. Um, uh, people to move forward with preparing the actual final design documents. Um, so that's what I have enclosed, uh, in the package here is just a proposal for, for, uh, preparation of that final design bid. Over the, uh, that I have estimated. Fees was fifty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-six. Um, that would be true, um, project. Um, this is included with the overall estimates of the C I P. Um, so I look at this as a component of the overall project cost.
So let's see the motion.
Yeah, just looking for a motion to approve it if I think I've got quite a.
Okay, I'll make a motion to for the twenty twenty-three street improvements. For fifty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-six.
A few more discussion on it. Again, we had a kind of motion made in second for the twenty twenty-three street improvement final design proposal. Cost of fifty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye please.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, ayes pass.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Anything else that you have? Okay, well, that's going along good. Okay, we'll do this legal and, um, send it to your rates.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, this one's not going so good.
Um. Oh, really?
No, I. It's just not going. Yeah, um, it's, it's same old, same old. Um, had a conversation obviously last month when, uh, Mark was not here to update. Um, further conversations with attorney directly, um, pushback again from property owner doesn't want to clean up certain things. The proposal was to mitigate, I don't know what you're mitigating here, and Mark said that's not happening, so we did not do that. Um, we're hoping for a little more of an update, but I don't have any further conversation that Mark and I had with one of my colleagues. Uh, and also with our prosecutor Jacobson, in some regards, it's too. Then you, by the end of the month, nothing changes, which is sort of what I said last month, look and see if they do anything, and it sounds like nothing.
Well, exactly. So I talked to the chief yesterday about basically, uh, they're gonna start, um, ticketing. You know, write tickets for those expired tabs. That was to be done already on, uh, before. But it might have been.
Well, I think they've done it in some fashion, but it's now a concerted effort.
But you have to do another one, basically.
And take it to criminal court rather than us trying to civilize. Um, we also offered that, you know, not mitigate, but can even cheat. The chief will show everything clean up and make it very clear, and that's not, we've not heard back on that offer. But yes, the idea is to start citing on everything. He'll have to show up and readily deal with it at that point.
I'm by there today and most, there's the one big truck left there. The rest of them have gone.
Okay.
But, um, and you can see that there has been a little bit of movement of consolidating a few things. I will honestly say that, you know, in his favor. Uh, but, uh, the votes are still there. I imagine they should be, uh, taken too. I don't know what they are or in place, um, numerous other things on that point of it.
We can hold off if there's progress, but it doesn't seem like.
No, I would say.
That's why we're saying, I think it's time to have to give it certain feeling with this and that side as well. Um, and if they want to come back to the civil side, that's fine, we'll talk to them, but I don't. It's time for them to show up and readily.
Yeah, well, I'm saying it's moving around as far as private is going. He had said that the big trucks were somebody else's problem, is that correct?
Well.
I mean, they, they sold them all, yeah. Those have been gone, but the rest of it now is what the problem is. That has been.
No, it is society for everything outdoors, piles, things like that. And we said, no, that's not the case, so.
Okay.
That's where we're at, and, you know, Mark and I will deal with it and with chief and do a day, and, and we'll see what happens. And then I'll teach you all.
No motion.
No.
No.
Why don't you? You know, about your stuff. I mean.
That is, that is, thank you. Going on with our old business. We have a resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four adopting the twenty twenty-three budget. And establishing the tax levy for payable twenty twenty-three. So Mark, whether you want to jump.
Yeah, this is, um, uh, there's been no change. What we talked about in September, so this is the proposed six point eight percent increase. You know, I'll go say with the growth and valuation, the actual impact on the eventual properties. I don't know, percent, but it's going to be lower than six point. So that's kind of, that's held as far as increases go. Yeah, I guess I don't have anything else on this.
Is there any other discussion that, um, council has? Take to see it.
I know.
But.
But it's not, that's not set, I mean, we're not going to six point eight for sure. That's just the maximum.
Max.
That's the max we can go.
No, we're locking it down now.
Yeah, this is like the final.
Oh, this is.
This is locking it down, so.
Okay.
It's now or never.
Mary, I'll move to the resolution twenty twenty-two. Send it below, we have one way, one.
Motion has been made in second for a resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four. Doting the twenty-three budget establishing the tax levy for payable twenty twenty-three. And, uh, the motion will be set at six point eight percent on the levy, so. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes pass. I gather that's the extent of the old business. I wouldn't hurt. But something that had to be done, really. Want to start with new business then? Uh, we'll have to do each one of these. Well, the first one that I made is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. A resolution committing capital fund balance. How do we go about doing that, Mark?
This is a, uh, colleague requirement that in order to commit, uh, annual adjusted funds and these numbers, amounts are returned to the audit. Um, this resolution has to pass, which basically says that the council proves committed capital fund balances from the fund that are identified after their, the audited final numbers, whatever they have left in those funds to capital.
Do we need to do each one separate?
Yeah, then you have four motions after that for public works, fire, or library. Yeah, so.
I'll make a motion on this one to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. I will second it.
Okay, any more discussion on it? I think there's motion been made, second for resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, a resolution committing capital fund balance. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, ayes pass.
So the next item that is gonna be. Fire department, so approved transfer of fire department, do any remaining funds to capital fund.
We're gonna do each one of these individually?
Yeah, there's each one. There's three of them.
Yeah. I'll make, have one of you made the motion, if you have an I, um.
I'll make a, I'm, I'll make a motion over the transfer of the fire depart- department year-end remaining funds to the capital fund.
Yeah, I'll second that one then. More discussion on it? If not, item B is approved transfer of fire department year-end remaining funds to the capital funds. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, ayes pass. Okay, we can go on then to item C, which is new transfer of street maintenance, year-end remaining funds to capital funds. Do you have a question?
Um. Well, no, yeah, we didn't put the pool here, we put the pool last year. So, okay, so it appears on the agenda that the street maintenance.
Yep.
But we want that to be streets, you know, pool.
I, I don't, I don't see a reason, you can't modify that at this point.
Okay.
Council discretion to designate what it is, you know, and again, you're having a discussion regarding it, so you can certainly modify it if necessary.
Okay, so I would say if you approve transfer of street maintenance, cool and parks, is that what we talked about? Okay, it's public works, right? So if you said approved transfer of public works, year-end remaining funds. Um, I guess that would cover all three of those, instead of street, change it to public works.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of public works, which is streeting and parks. Year-end remaining balance, remaining funds. I'll second it.
Any more discussion on it? Uh, the item C, approved transfer of public works. Cool and park, year-end remaining funds, capital funds. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes pass.
All right, and then the final one is approved transfer of excess funds from the library, book, budget, and capital fund. Library capital, now, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion been made, second. Any discussion on it? Transfer of excess funds from the library book budget to capital fund. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, ayes pass. Okay. Tobacco license renewals, those we can all do at the same time, if that's correct. Which is Canyon Market, River Country Co-op, which is Speedway. And KM Canyon Municipal, hey, Canyon Municipal liquor store. Um, we can do all three of those at once. Motion on that.
I'll move the approval of twenty twenty-three tobacco.
More discussion. There has been motion made, second for twenty twenty-three tobacco license renewals for Canyon Market. River Country Co-op, which is Speedway, and Canyon Municipal liquor stores. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes pass. Only thing, item B is K M U commission wage increase. Now, what they will come up with is twelve hundred dollars a year. Possible increase would be two hundred dollars. Now, what I have talked to Randy and to, um, Jim Mulvaney, and they have felt that this would be something to go into the budget for KMU in twenty twenty-four. So that's all that I'm saying at this particular moment. I have had, uh, somebody approach me on also, well, if we've got a couple of departments meeting, uh, lighting commission, uh, library board, going, there's, it's all for you. So they're, I'm just saying, throwing it out, that's all, so we have to. So KMU, this comes out of their own budget, so. Personally, I, personally, I think they've done an extremely good job. We have borrowed money from them for various reasons. Um, looking back from what I was able to find out is unknown when there was an increase. Is that correct, Randy?
I don't.
Yeah. Somewhere I was said in the past.
And like, I mean, I suppose, I mean, I don't, we don't really have anything to compare it to.
Hey, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's like, is there anything we can compare it to? You know, like other towns. But you can't really, because, I know, depends on the size of town.
Yeah, you just, I suppose you could call around and see.
Right, I mean, it's not a big deal either, but you know, it'd just be interesting to.
See.
To see and know, and have something to, you know, pu- push it up against, I guess.
Well, this is something that could held off for a while, you know, it is not comparison.
When they say, I think there's.
I don't. Or a book. Have a book. Yeah. I asked, I have a problem. Book. Own. Well, you're separate. Yeah.
Well, that was my question, so you want, I think you're gonna budget it, put it in point point four, that's still a whole other thirteen months out. How many people are on it, on that?
Five.
Um. I guess. All of that. Product. Not. Talk about. Capital for council.
Yeah, that's what Jim came to me and said the same thing. So. Well, I'll tell you what, council members.
Well, if they've never had an increase, there's three people at six hundred bucks. I mean, I don't really think that's a good deal.
Yep, they're gonna set their own budget here at their next meeting, just asking. Have the permission to do it, I think you should.
Yeah.
And I think when it comes to the other committees that maybe have that, it's a discussion for twenty twenty-four budget.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, even, I mean, just to talk in some, or, you know, just to, or, that, that goes a long way. Showing appreciation, have the same, I think you'd, uh, love budget over it, but might be something. So for this, I'll move, uh, approval of the two hundred dollar increase to KMU. Should wait for twenty twenty.
I will second it.
Right, you named for twenty-three.
For twenty twenty. Okay. Well, it should.
Stay in the line, huh?
Oh, okay, okay, I see. Okay, makes sense.
Okay. Do we need to do that on, uh?
No.
Do we, just general?
Yeah.
Can voice for it, okay. There has been a motion made, second. Discussion has been made, KMU commission wage increase for twenty twenty-three, okay? Of two hundred dollars. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You have one extension.
By the beer. That right, Mary?
Yeah, you gotta make.
Okay. We can go on now. Next one here is. We can go on now, next one has. Police Department, take a look, release a new printer, scanner, fax machine. And we do have information on that.
Yeah, so, um, police, chief, police department asking for quotes of these candidate. Fact sheet. Um, got three quotes. Lowest one was candidate. Field test. Best. You know, for this summer. So. Would, uh, require, the lease would require the council. So it'd be a five year lease similar to what we do with Toshiba. Um. I don't, the question.
I mean, that's.
Budget for twenty twenty three.
No, we have to amend the budget a little bit, I will tell you that one's definitely gone up though. Um, so I don't think it's gonna, it's thirty three dollars a month, so. Money for that? Maybe, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, annualized, it's gonna be. Uh, four, oh, five thousand dollars probably, so, yeah.
Why are we not, why are we leasing, I mean, I just don't know that, why are we leasing it?
Well, we normally would lease some, just because we turn them over. Like when we do a five year lease, we usually give it, we turn it over at the beginning of fifth year. Uh, you know, for sale, but you don't have to take it out to the hand. Cause usually by the time that things five years old, it's.
Then it's over, right, technology.
Yeah. So it's just kinda like, it just spreads like.
It does, it's cheaper to do that, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
There's interest involved, there's a small amount of interest involved, so if we were gonna pay for cash, I suppose it'd be cheaper.
Okay.
I think the problem if you buy it though, then that's your machine.
Yeah.
Service it and.
And make service it if it releases it.
I think it's a better sign.
That's enough, that's right, there's, yeah, okay, got it.
That's what the library does.
Yes, the, the library doesn't lease too often.
I know, it's gonna probably be rough to get into the budget, but starting for twenty four, we bring that in.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think for twenty twenty three, we have that federal COVID money, that I think this would work perfectly for, it's helping with. Facility, communication, non-personal. Um, and then you did it, the, the city budget for twenty twenty four.
Yeah. That's how I was looking at it.
Yeah, we, we can look at that, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second that one, it's fine. Any more discussion on it? And this is with canon investment, correct?
It's with lawfare equipment, so it's a canon.
Yeah, oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Motion been made, second. For, um. Going to release on a new printer, scanner, fax machine, and I gather we'll put in the price of forty three eighty a month, is that correct? Okay. More discussion on it? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, ayes, pass, okay, got a new machine, when will that start coming in, you know?
No, I, I'll soon with. Yeah, it usually takes, it might be two weeks or something, it depends if they have it stocked or not, you know, so.
Okay. City office, holiday closings. Do I have to have a motion on that?
Um, yeah, we're asking for two things, one, that the city office and the library close early on Friday, so much one third. And then the library's asked to be closed on Christmas, Saturday, December twenty fourth.
I will make a motion to allow the city office and library to be closed on the twenty third and the twenty fourth, or close early on the twenty third and close on the twenty fourth.
Okay. Motion has been made, second for holiday office closings, city office, library closed early on Friday. December the twenty third at noon. Oh, watch any reading, I'm sorry, it says December. December, I'm sorry. And the library closed on Saturday, December the twenty fourth, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, motion passes. Yes. Okay. Well, I think that is a good question, that. Yeah, I know, so. It's a new one.
Well, I don't, I think, I don't know the. People take vacation. Like that, but, so, I'll look back and see what we've done, cause we closed early. Or look at work, right? That's it, so they can work, or if they wanted to take vacation. But the offices will be like closed to.
Like they have to take vacation for Christmas Day, really? I mean, really?
Oh, uh, it's Christmas.
Christmas Eve, okay, I was like, whoa, that's.
No, Christmas Day. I mean, on Sunday, we got Monday, I mean, there's Monday, so that's vacation, I mean, that's a holiday.
Okay.
Second of January, right?
Yeah, same thing, Christmas, so.
Okay, okay.
That answer your question? Okay. Okay. I gather that's it for. Your business. Other business, schedule of upcoming meetings. Cam New Meeting will be Thursday, December the twentieth at four P M. City council meeting will be Tuesday, January the tenth at seven P M. Council and staff, general comments. Let's start around with you, Mark.
Um, let's see, it's a couple of things, I'd like to thank everybody who's had the Christmas at Kenyon. Uh, Kim Helwison, did a great job, other people, did a great job organizing that, um, so I think overall, most of it. I mean, and I was, I think it all went pretty well. Dan, also, I wanna thank you for looking. On council.
Right, Dan just wanted to relay what Mark was saying, I, I really appreciate the work, and I have a lot of respect. For your approach to choose outside of, uh, infrastructure projects, uh, uh, something to be, uh, to be noted, I, I admire your equipment. Just working with you. See you around. Reiterate that, although I like working with all of you. No, I, it's been, I, I'm proud of the work, and, and, and it is all, it's a great council, so, uh, good luck. Happy holidays to you.
Holly will let you.
I will be the same, Dan, I can't ask you my stupid questions anymore. Uh, but yeah, it's been a pleasure, I also. On a teacher level with my kids, but they've done great things with the council, great things. And happy holidays to you. I'm bummed, but, but I'm sure you're happy, so. Have a break. So, yeah, thank you for all your help too. Unanswered my stupid questions.
Well, I'm gonna say this year, a little bit of a, library, I think, has done a marvelous job this year, public works. Seen major improvements in the street. Been able to upgrade your equipment. Police department, new chief, new officer, guys have been out there knocking down crime, they've been removing the city. They're giving convictions, I appreciate that, and I do know that the people of the city of Kenyon also are appreciating it. Christmas in Kenyon and Rosefest, I think really went over well this year. I mean, I really, I think it's gotten started. Dan? All I can say is thank you for your input. I think you have answered a lot of questions for all of us, and I know you certainly have for me. And I've also talked to you about it, I says, Dan, I've given you a shoulder for spoons, what, thirty some years already?
Twenty some.
Okay, well, twenty some. And that is valuable to all of us and to the city, so. Good luck on whatever you do. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to each and everybody, so, is there any other comments that would be liked to made out?
Have you been asked for it, or is it just because you have a grant, uh, opportunity?
Many other cities have done that, they. Public spot, energy is a tough city, so. It does, it, it does, it has a big effect, yeah.
Randy, I would say this year, look into it rather and see what's what you have, I, I think it's a coming thing that would. Yeah. Why? The thing that I haven't been able to find out, or really find any information on is, how do they, how do the person pay for this year? I would, you know, there's many, you know, the charge of vehicle. What's the rate usually, have you heard anything on that? You could put that in for a profit though, is that correct? Just like a gas station, you go and get your gas, you pay. Yeah, but I mean, it should be profitable. Okay.
It's up to us to solve.
Okay. Anybody else got something, wish to say? Okay, we don't, we can make in the German.
I make a motion for Jerry. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion been made, Dan? Did you have a last minute in?
Sorry, just wanted to. Thank you all, I've enjoyed working with all of you. Good hands, uh, great staff, that, uh, I've been complimented so many times from people in the public. Whenever there's a storm, or when it's snowing, or do, how, how the staff responded during COVID. And, uh, so, yeah, it's, uh, wish you all the best, you're gonna do well.
Thank you, Dan, I did have you last, and I gotta, I tell you, but I didn't, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. There has been a, or a motion been made, second for, anyone opposed to that? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes, pass.